All right. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the December the 20th meeting of the Baldwin County Commission here at the Fairhope Satellite Courthouse. And at this time, I'd like to ask Pastor Jason Garcia with the Celebration Church of Fairhope to do the invocation followed by the pledge from Commissioner Ball.
Let us pray. Dear God, we want to say thank you for everything you've given us and bless us with so far. During this holiday season, we just want to say thank you for our friends, our family, and this great community. We want to pray today for this meeting, Lord, that you help us steward what you have given us, Lord. God, we just pray that Baldwin County can be a great place to live for our friends, our family, and our community. Thank you so much in advance for everything that you're going to do. In your prayer, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all so very much. At this time, we have the Baldwin Pops here this morning, and they're going to entertain us a little bit this morning. So, y'all?
Just a couple of carols. If you know the words, feel free to sing along.
Okay, thank you. One, two, three, four, one, two, three.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you for the support of Baldwin Pops. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for coming here this morning and entertaining us. That was fantastic, and I appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we get the heat cut down?
Yep. Somebody's making the utility company happy because it is hot in here.
All right, commissioners, we're going to go ahead and get started then. Next, the only thing is the adoption of the minutes from our last meeting, December the 5th, 2022 regular meetings. Motion made by Commissioner Ball. Go here, second. Seconded by Commissioner Underwood to approve the minutes of the December the 5th, 2022 regular meeting. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As have, thank you very much. All right, next is the payment of the bills.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we approve payment of the bills and distribution of taxes which are listed in the Baldwin County Accounts payable payments.
Second.
All right, got a motion made by Commissioner Underwood, seconded by Commissioner Ball to pay the bills. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, next is the consent agenda. Mr. Sink?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. For you, for your consideration is your consent agenda. Please note, CA 2 and CA 3 have an approval that's contingent upon the applicant obtaining Health Department permits as well as CQ 9, which was removed from the agenda at the request of staff.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we approve the consent agenda. As Mr. Sink stated, there is approval contingent. See's on CA 2 and CA 3, and CQ 9 has been removed. Okay.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Underwood. Go here, second.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner McKenzie to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As have, all right, next.
Next, Mr. Chairman, there are no presentations or public hearings. We're under other staff recommendations. Section FA Administration. Item FA 1 is revision of Baldwin County Commission Policy 2.22, which is the Baldwin County Firearms Policy.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion.
I got a motion made by Commissioner Ball.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Underwood to approve item number FA 2, which is the Baldwin County Commission Policy for Firearms.
It's FA 1, Mr. Chairman.
It's FA 1, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
FA 1, excuse me. Thank you. All right, got a motion by Commissioner Underwood, I mean, Commissioner Ball, seconded by Commissioner Underwood. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
As have, all right, next.
Next is item FA 2, which is a sublease agreement with Highland Construction LLC, doing business as the Addison Group for office space for Baldwin County Legislative Delegation.
Make a motion.
I got a motion made by Commissioner Ball.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Underwood. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As have, next.
Next, Mr. Chairman, FM 1 was a discussion item only. Item FR, which is planning and zoning, item FR 1, which is Baldwin County Environmental Advisory Committee Dirt Road Subcommittee's, the 25 most environmentally damaging dirt roads, third publication. I think if I recall correctly, your action is to approve those roads.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Ball, seconded by Commissioner Underwood to approve item number FR 1, which is the Baldwin County Environmental Advisory Board Committee's Dirt Road, 25 most environmentally damaged dirt roads, the third publication. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment, please? Because sometimes those who are here about items get up and leave after we voted on them. So while you two, is it just Brett and Ashley that are here about that? No? Okay, I want to make sure because I'm not always sure who all the people are in the audience. But I just want to thank you guys, and please extend our thanks to the rest of the Environmental Advisory Committee. This is a lot of work. If nothing else, if it wasn't anything more than just having to drive to all these roads and look at them. So some of these roads go from all over this county, and I really enjoyed, I know you guys got a little bit of tweaking maybe before you're 100% complete with all the wording in there. But I, if I didn't read it all, I looked at every picture, I can assure you of that. So thanks for the photos, and I read your recommendations. Okay? And I thank you for your recommendations because, you know, not every dirt road needs to be paved. And I do appreciate what you guys are doing, and it's long overdue. I'm glad you're back. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I think we already did that.
Okay. All right, as have, all right, next.
Next, Mr. Chairman, is Section G, which is the American Rescue Plan Act Recommendations. Item GA 1 has been removed at the pull request of staff due to a discrepancy in the ACCA Cost Estimate. Item GA 2 is Resolution 2023-40, which is allocation of interest earned from the American Rescue Plan Act, funds to reimburse the general and other departmental funds for the ineligible employees' temporary premium payments.
Okay, commissioners, you've heard a recommendation from the staff.
May I make a discussion?
Yes.
Can I have to talk about that for a second? I know we're going to vote on this, and I just hope we make the right decision, whatever we decide to vote. I like to see the money go back into the general fund. It was used, so I just like to, you know, that's taxpayers' money, and I like to see it go back in there.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right. Do I hear motion on item number GA 2 to allocate the interest earned from the American Rescue Plan ARPA?
I'll make a motion to get it to vote.
Been a motion made by Commissioner Ball.
What was his motion? What was your?
I'm making a motion.
All right, I'll second that.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Ball, seconded by Commissioner McKenzie. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
By saying aye, I am saying aye that we agree not to go back to the general fund.
Going back to what the recommendation was, staff recommendation.
I just want to make sure I'm clear on what I'm saying, something.
Okay. Go here, no motion.
So nobody's saying aye?
Nobody, nothing.
All right, so I'm going to say aye because I want, is that what I'm doing? Yeah, I'm saying aye because I wanted to go back to the general fund.
Okay, all right.
Sorry.
I got a motion.
So do we have one aye? Is that all we got?
Well, okay, this says reimburse the general fund and other departmental funds, so it's not just going to the general fund. So just want to clarify that.
Well, it was.
That's what's in the item, the agenda item.
We need to clean this up. We have a motion and a second and one aye.
We need to go to the nays.
Okay. All opposed?
No.
No.
All right.
What was your vote, Mr. Chairman?
Nay. So it fails. All right, next item?
Next item, Mr. Chairman, is item GA 3, which is Resolution 2023-41, allocation of American Rescue Plan Act Revenue Replacement Fund for the Lexipool LLC Law Enforcement Training.
Make a motion.
Got a motion made by Commissioner.
I'll second that.
Ball, seconded by Commissioner McKenzie. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As have, next.
Next item is item GA 4, which is Resolution 2023-42, allocation of American Rescue Plan Act Revenue Replacement Funds to the Historic Blakely State Park Authority.
Motion.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Underwood.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Ball.
I got some discussion, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind. As I recall yesterday, Mr. Sink, when we discussed these, we knew that GA 1 and GA 2 were going to be, GA 1 was off, GA 2 was, and I made the announcement that we could go ahead and consent on GA 3 through GA 14, and we agreed to do that.
Okay, do you want to pull all these then? Y'all want them?
Don't you remember us talking about that?
Yes.
There's no need to take these one at a time.
Can we vote on them all collectively?
We can vote on them all except for the ones that we want to pull.
I mean, my motion would be to go ahead, since we've already done GA 3, we were on GA 4, is to make a motion that GA 4 through GA 14.
13, ain't it?
Approve, approve those.
Okay. I got a motion made by Commissioner Ball.
And I'll second it.
To approve the items GA 4 through GA 14.
I'll second it.
And seconded by Commissioner Underwood. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As have, all right, next.
Next, Mr. Chairman, is the agenda. There's item HA 1, which is Highway Safety Improvement Program, County Road 13, at County Road 44 Roundabout Project. This is the bid, award, and warrant payable.
All right, commissioners?
I'll make a motion. Will you approve item HA 1?
Second.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Underwood, seconded by Commissioner McKenzie.
No, it was by, it was by Ball.
Oh, God, Commissioner Ball, excuse me.
That's all right.
To approve item number HA 1. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As have, all right, next.
Item HA 2, which is Commission Administration Department, the creation of a grants department.
Commissioners?
I'll make a motion. We approve HA 2.
I'll second it.
Got a motion made by Commissioner McKenzie, seconded by Commissioner Underwood to approve item number HA 2. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As have, next.
Next item is item HA 3, which is Baldwin County Library Board. These are board appointments.
All right, commissioners? I hear motion.
Make a motion.
Okay, got a motion made by Commissioner Ball, seconded by Commissioner Underwood to approve item number HA 3. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, next.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, is Commissioner's request. There is a published item.
We got FA 2, right. Addendum FA 2 is the replacement lease.
It got put in.
It's in the addendum.
We got HA, yeah. We got I through.
So we voted on that already?
Yes.
Yeah, it was put up in the consent.
I thought that was the one in Orange Beach. This is the one for.
That was up here.
It's all together.
I'm looking at the addenda, item FA 2, so I'm just making.
We voted on that one, administration.
Replacement attachment, okay. Just want to make sure we got that covered.
All right. Sink, Nick?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner's request, there is one published item.
Okay.
Can I have a question about that? I mean, why, since, if we, if a commissioner has a request, we just do that from the dice. Why is, why is this a published item?
Because it was requested that way.
Requested to be a published item? Can it, can it just be a regular agenda item?
It could have been, yes.
Let's do that from now on, if you don't mind. If we request something, there's no reason to stick it, it's just like any other addendum item that we ask you to put on there.
It could go under consent.
That's just my, my request.
Well, we didn't.
We've never done this. This is the first time I've seen this in four years.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item IA 1, as I am the one that requested that item be there.
Is that, that's the.
Josephine is the recent.
I'll second that.
Yes.
That we're taking and do away with it? Or re.
The project.
I've already seconded it.
While we're doing this, we're, we're.
Motion.
Stop, okay, we're not moving forward with it. The park stays just like it is.
And the funds that were allocated will go back to the, 60,000 goes back to general, 600,000 goes back to Go Mesa. And also, for the record, whenever those Go Mesa funds are very limited to what they could be used for, there was no ill intentions meant whatsoever, but after some soul searching, I think we can allocate that money to somewhere else. And also, the Josephine boat launch belongs to the state of Alabama, and Baldwin County, since I believe 1996, has very graciously expended county funds to take care of that park. It is a park that belongs to the people of Baldwin County, or state of Alabama, and so it was just, it was meant to be good, but you know what? We have many, many, many other items we can use those funds for. So this is to rescind that project, not any, has anything else to do with the park. We still are maintaining the park with our MOU with state of Alabama. Okay?
Okay. I got a motion made by Commissioner Underwood, seconded by Commissioner McKenzie to accept staff's recommendation of number IA 1.
No.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As have it. All right, next, senior staff report?
I have no senior staff report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Next is the county attorney's report.
No report.
That's always good.
That's right.
Next is public comment. Anyone from the public who would like to speak? Seeing none. All right, press questions? No press? All right, commission comments, Commissioner Ball?
Yeah, I'd just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Commissioner McKenzie?
I'd just like to say thank you all, everybody, and the staff for sure. Thank you, Kai, and your staff for doing an excellent job with this ARPA. It's a headache, but I just want to say thank you for what y'all have done, and that's all the staff. Y'all have a Merry Christmas. Please be safe. It's, this is the time of the year where accidents start happening, crashes, and people start losing their loved ones, so please just be careful out there when you're on the roads. Don't drink and drive, and have a Happy New Year.
Commissioner Underwood?
Oh, yes, I just want to say Merry Christmas, everyone. Thank you to all of our staff, and I want.
Thank you to all of our staff, and I want to- I know she's sitting over there anxiously wondering what in the world I'm going to say, because I told Anu Gary, who is behind the scenes many, many times. She is kind of the glue that keeps the admin department together. And a couple of months ago, a citizen contacted me, and sometimes people have no one else that they know that can help them out there, and this had nothing to do with what the Ballin County Commission does, but they're like, "Look, nobody will help me." And it had to do with some nutrition cards that are available through the DHR program. I don't even know all how it works. All I know is that when something comes through and it says DHR nutrition cards, I know it's not us. I know it's the state. Okay? And so, I believe my assistant was out on leave at the time that this came through because, you know, people contact you in all kind of precarious ways, and I'll just say it for the record, I can't stand to get contacted through Facebook Messenger, but it happens. So, any of you that have Facebook Messenger? And you know what? I would have to say that even though I don't like it, it is an avenue. So, I knew this lady. I've known her for a very long time, haven't seen her in a very long time, and she had- I will not reveal her identity for her privacy, but she has custody of her grandchildren, and she is on disability, and she needed this help. And she was just running into a brick wall and red tape, and no one would help her. And they told her, even from the departments that she would get contacted about, that you're eligible. Those children are eligible for this nutrition card or whatever it is. Some of you may know what I'm talking about, but- But nobody would help her. It was like, "Yeah, you're eligible," but, you know. So, I asked Anu, I said, "Can you help me just even if we reach out to somebody from the state or whatever?" And I really don't even know who all she sent this email to. And she persevered because even when my assistant came back off leave, she was like, "Be sure you have her follow up with this," because Anu is a stickler, man. She gonna stay on something. So, Anu, I wanted to tell you thank you, because again, it was through Facebook Messenger. On December 17th, I said, "This lady contacted me and said, 'I wanted to thank you for putting me in touch with the right people. They received their cards today. Happy holidays and God bless.'" But who I want to thank is the person that helped me, who is Anu, and then Carrie Green, who followed up. So, this is that time of season when we need to extend kindness. We need to realize what this Christmas season is about. I- I just can't say enough about how that these little things like this that don't get told about and don't get noticed mean so much to other people when you feel like you don't have a voice out there. I know sometimes people contact me about things, it's like, "Oh, Lord, that has nothing to do with the Ballin County Commission." But this was one of those things that we were able to help someone with and- Or connect- It was just connecting. So, thank you, Anu, and now you can breathe a sigh of relief. I'm not going to embarrass you. But thank you. And Merry Christmas, and again, to our staff. It's not easy being in this position that we're in, and I know it's not easy being in the position you're in, but I hope you understand that I do truly appreciate each and every one of you, and Merry Christmas.
All right, I want to thank the staff and everyone for getting this agenda to where it's at today. There's a lot of work goes into this, getting this agenda to the commission, and I'd like to extend a warm welcome and thank the Ballin Pops for being here this morning. That was very- That was very nice of them to give up their time to come and give us a little bit of Christmas spirit, getting started right into season. And so, I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and please be safe in your travels. That being said, do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Underwood, seconded by Commissioner Ball to adjourn, and we adjourned at 9 o'clock.